Meeting to order, and if you would all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Leininger is out of the office and won't be in attendance today, but she'll be back. And we have first on our agenda, citizen communication on non-agenda items. A lot of you have signed up for the public hearing later, but I do have one person who has signed up on a non-agenda item, and that is Susan Hansen. Susan, you'll have three minutes, and we'll need your name and address for the record. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Susan Hansen, PO Box 50, Malala, Oregon. I've got concerns about lack of transparency in Clackamas County planning. I participated in Attorney General Kroger's transparency in government and testified with many other citizens last spring about the need for more open meetings, better public information sharing. At that meeting, after telling of frustrations with other agencies, I was happy to say that I believe Clackamas County was a leader in transparency. However, next week, Clackamas County is hosting a meeting between the City of Malala, DLCD, and Clackamas County Planning. Malala area residents have been participating in four years of a frustrating process that has largely ignored Goal One. Many of us have written in and begged to attend this meeting. It's going to be an important policy-setting meeting. We've been refused access to this meeting. I'm asking you to reconsider. The state land use goals are clear about Goal One. We are supposed to be involved in all phases of planning. Participants shall be appropriate to the scale of planning effort. There must be continuity in citizen participation, information sharing, and effective two-way communication with citizens. Technical information necessary to reach policy decisions should be available in simplified form. Assistance should be provided to interpret and effectively use technical information. The roles, responsibility, and timeline should be clearly defined and publicized, and there must be feedback mechanisms. Citizens' attitudes should also be understood and reported to the public. To date, the process in Malala has caused great distress among citizen taxpayers who have no official information from DLC or the county to counter the claim that Malala will soon engulf rural lands. Your citizens should be able to live a secure life on land of their choice by fully understanding the policy and goals that govern land use, especially since Malala has already passed and has begun to use these plans before they are approved at county and state. In this economy, Malala's ongoing and unfounded claims of growth make every day of uncertainty unfair to landowners. It's also caused unfounded speculation. Malala's also used this to cite the pipeline route, which was pushed around due to their unfounded claims. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money have been wasted on unneeded plans. Without information sharing, the public has no capacity to stop the waste of public funds on plans that won't be legally defensible. Again, Goal One has not been served. There's no capacity for citizens to understand technical information if we refuse the opportunity to observe important technical policy-setting meetings. Please reconsider and allow interested citizens to observe this meeting. If you refuse, please schedule a meeting to interface with citizens and answer direct questions about the technical policy setting that will occur at this meeting. How do you intend to transfer this important policy meeting to interested citizens who have been writing repeatedly to ask for access to this meeting?
Thank you, Susan.
Does anyone have any answers to that?
No questions, but I was just gonna, while you left and got off to go, I was gonna have the county administrator give. So, thanks, Susan. Steve, could you just let us know where we're at with that issue?
Well, we're very aware of her issues and concerns, and I've asked county council to take a look at the appropriateness of setting that up for an observer's role. Honestly, every staff meeting is not subject to a public participation at that time. So, I'm going to work with county council and the planning staff to ensure that we have very adequate public knowledge, public participation, et cetera, but that does not translate to every staff meeting being an observer's forum. So, the instant issue about her question, I don't have the answer right now, but we'll be back in touch with her very soon on that.
My understanding is we're working on the answer, and that we're gonna make sure that we also get the information of the next steps in the public process, so they know where it is that they can get their information to-
Absolutely.
-based on the outcome of a technical discussion on the legalities of a whole bunch of different rules, is my understanding. So, it's staff to staff trying to understand what the legality of the legal situation is.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Susan. All right. Next on the agenda, we have our first public hearing. It's the first reading of an ordinance. There will be no decision today because there will be a second hearing on December 9th. So, today, we are going to hear testimony from everybody on the first reading of ordinance number, we don't have a number.
I'll assign that.
That's right. Adding Chapter 4.04 Vehicle Registration Fee, Sellwood Bridge, the Clackamas County Code. And we have Cam Gilmore to give us a background information on this topic, and then we'll head into the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, and good morning. Mary, would you start the film? We have a little film that is gonna be silenced, not narrated, that will give everybody up here and in the audience a chance to sort of look at the Sellwood Bridge as I give you a very brief overview of what we're here today to present to you. The Sellwood Bridge is a bridge that was constructed in 1925, and many of us here today have learned over reading the newspapers and everything else that this bridge is in need of replacement. And about four years ago, Multnomah County, City of Portland, Clackamas County, Metro, TriMet, and ODOT started working jointly on an environmental impact statement, draft and final, that has come to fruition just in the last few months, and a preferred alternative has been identified that addresses the need, establishes the need, and addresses how to replace this bridge. This bridge has a highway bridge replacement rating at the federal level of two out of 100. I don't think there's a structure in Oregon that is open that has a rating any lower than that. Interestingly, as you see in the film, traffic can still pass over this bridge. That's because there's been enough engineering work done to know that while it's cracking and it's deteriorating at an increasing rate, actually, although Multnomah County thinks they've slowed that down a bit, lighter vehicles can pass over the bridge safely. There's a 10-ton load limit, but buses, heavy trucks, that kind of thing cannot, that kind of weight is not good for the long-term health of this bridge. So, for a number of years, this weight restriction has been on the bridge. So, the conclusion of this four-year study basically was that indeed, the bridge needs to be replaced, and we, because of that work, we have a pretty good idea of what it's gonna cost. Right now, the bridge is looking at something like, including the need to interchange traffic on the west end of it with the Oswego Highway, somewhere between $290 million and $330 million. And, boy, that's a lot of money. I think everybody would agree with that. Early on in this study, a look at tolling as a way of paying for this bridge was taken, and it was determined in that study that because of the cost of the bridge, it's, say, $300 million, the toll would be, have to be so high that there'd be a lot of trip diversion. And as a result of that, another look was taken at, well, then if it was a lower toll, what kind of revenue would be generated? Well, there wouldn't be enough revenue generated to pay for the bridge. So, that led to a discussion of how are we gonna pay for it? At the time, the Federal Highway Administration had, I think it was something, and Alyssa, you may know the exact number, but maybe $20 million. Some of that money is still left that was put up to actually do the draft and the final environmental impact statement and some of the engineering, and I believe some of that money is still left. So, the conclusion was reached that tolling this bridge alone probably isn't feasible at this time. It wouldn't generate enough money, or it would cause diversion of traffic if it was too high of a toll. That led to, as I just started to say, a discussion of, well, how are we gonna pay for it? Last year, Multnomah County enacted a vehicle registration fee at $19 per year, which would be $38 every other year when you register a passenger car, to raise the money for their $127 million contribution. The City of Portland has agreed to contribute an amount up to $100 million. ODOT has agreed, and this is actually in the statute, to put up $30 million. In our discussions as partners, we have tentatively proposed to put up $22 million. And I'll explain kind of why that, it's a 22 in a moment. And then, there's about $11 million left in the project, and I think if you add all of those monies up, you get to $290 million. That has led to a look at, can $40 million in savings be worked out on this bridge if, in fact, it is gonna cost, in its preliminary engineering form, $330 million? And the information, even though it's not final, indicates that there probably can be some cost savings on this bridge. Whether it can be $40 million or more, no one knows yet, but a consultant is working on that. So, Clackamas County's contribution of $22 million was really necessary to get this project to the $290 million mark. The $330 million mark was based on more Federal Highway Administration appropriations, about $40 million. It doesn't look like that's gonna be forthcoming. So, I think we could say today, a more realistic look at the cost of this bridge is $290 million. Like Multnomah County, Clackamas County, the Board of County Commissioners can consider the enactment of a vehicle registration fee that would be applied to basically light vehicles of any registered vehicle in Clackamas County, that's a light vehicle, a vehicle weighing under 26,000 pounds, and motorcycles, and a few other classes of vehicles, about 325,000 in total. A vehicle registration fee can be enacted to pay for this bridge, and this bridge only. The statute that allows us to consider this, House Bill 2001, in the 2009 legislature, limits the vehicle registration fee between now and July 1 of 2013 to the Sellwood Bridge only. In order to raise $22 million, we need about a $5 vehicle registration fee per year, $10 every other year. That would allow debt service to be paid on that $22 million bond. The construction of this bridge is supposed to start in late 2012, and that would require a bond to be let earlier than that date. So, sometime between mid-2011 and mid-2012, should this be enacted, Clackamas County would be in a position to pay its share. Now, let's talk a little bit about why should we be paying this share. This bridge is extraordinarily important to Clackamas County. Granted, it's in the City of Portland. Granted, it's in Multnomah County and maintained by Multnomah County, but most of the use put to this bridge involves traffic that is traveling to or from Clackamas County. For those of you that are interested in knowing a little bit more about that, in 1994, and then it was updated in 2006, a study was done that kind of figures out, using traffic modeling, where traffic is coming and going. And this study established, it's called the, it was actually called the Sellwood Bridge and South Willamette River Crossing Study. When it was updated in 2006, it was found that the information from the '90s is still valid, and the bridge is still largely used. About 70% of the traffic is either to or from Clackamas County. So, that's one nexus we have to this bridge, is it's very important for Clackamas County businesses, it's important for Clackamas County commuters, and it's important for people that just simply need to get across the Willamette River. We only have one other crossing in Clackamas County other than the interstate. Of course, we have the Canby Ferry, and that's the Arch Bridge, well, if we're discounting the Abernathy Bridge over 205, and that's the Arch Bridge here in town. So, the Arch Bridge and the Sellwood Bridge are about 12 miles apart. Another important aspect of this consideration is, since the Sellwood Bridge is indeed in need of replacement, shorter than later, why is that? Well, it's a rating of two, and there's some concern that a moderate earthquake could actually cause severe damage to this bridge. A moderate earthquake could be something between five and six. So, this bridge is gonna be designed to withstand a much more severe earthquake than that, probably an earthquake in the neighborhood of eight. And I know that's very technical and everything, I don't know all the factors that go into that, but that's a major earthquake, and this bridge will be designed to probably have some damages, but would likely remain open to traffic at some point shortly after a disaster like that. All the other bridges crossing the Willamette River have not been designed to that high of a standard. This is gonna be designed to a 500-year seismic event, which is huge. The last one was 1700 off the coast, a subduction zone earthquake, and some experts say that we're overdue to have that happen again. We're right in that zone. So, this will be a bridge that, should there ever be that unfortunate thing happen in the future, it may be one of the few bridges that remain open, not for use just by Clackamas County and emergency transport and that sort of thing, but the region as a whole. The last bridge built over the Willamette River, by the way, was Fremont Bridge in 1973, so it's been a while. New bridge. I think I'll just close it at that point, unless you have some questions I could answer.
Commissioner Questions? Commissioner Bernard?
One of the complaints I heard was that, how are we assured that the money that is collected for the vehicle registration is assured that it would go to this project and not say, "Multnomah County or Portland decides, let's build another tram"? How would we be assured that that money would be limited to this project only?
That'll be, that'll be done through the intergovernmental agreements that we affect with the City of Portland and Multnomah County, and probably ODOT.
And so, do we have that intergovernmental agreement now?
No, we don't, but we will have before any, you know, final, anything final happens. Let me comment on that just briefly, too. Should this be enacted, there's a 90, there's a 90-day period before the ordinance goes into effect, and let's say that's in the spring. ODOT has informed us that it's actually a division of motor vehicles, that they'll, they need about six months, that's about how long it took with Multnomah County, to actually reprogram their computer so they can start collecting this fee sometime in late summer of next year or very early fall. And so, we'd wanna have something in place before then.
Commissioner Bernard, Chair, with your permission, let me help with that question.
Would you introduce yourself for the record?
I'm one of your attorneys. The statute that enables us to impose this in the first place is O.R.S. 801041, and it is extremely specific. It only allows this money to be used exclusively for the acquisition of property for and design, replacement, engineering, and construction of the bridge. All of Clackamas County's money has to be devoted exclusively to the bridge in order to be consistent with the statute. The I.G.A. that Director Gilmore referred to would be drafted consistent with the statute.
Yeah.
So, administrative expense, is that part of that?
The administrative expense, Commissioner, is limited to the administrative expense that the Department of Transportation has in collecting the money and remitting it in turn to us, and we would have the right to audit that administrative expense on the part of ODOT.
And let me just jump in quickly on that, because we do include in this, up to this point, we've been, it's really been our time that we've offered the project in many, 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 many meetings over the last four years, and there's still gonna be a lot more work. We have a, we have a vital interest in ensuring that we're at the table when this project is designed. We have a, we think we have a vital interest in how the project will end up interfacing with the Oswego Highway, and so, we plan to spend more time with Multnomah County and the design engineers through the design process. So, we are suggesting an amount of money be used, still Sellwood, specifically Sellwood, not anything else, that would come out of this $22 million for staff time.
Commissioners, any further questions? Can I just add up some of the timeline that you just talked about? If there's 90 days that it would go into effect, that would actually mean nine, somewhere between nine and 12 months before the actual amount would be collected-
Right.
-which means that this would not be in effect until next, hopefully, maybe sometime next year even.
Yes.
At the end of next year, beginning of the following year. So, folks that are perhaps still feeling the recession will hopefully find a little bit of solace in that, that it's not hitting now, it would be hitting the mailbox much later than that.
That's true.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bernard?
So, that means that if your car is already registered, if you register in 2011 for two years, it'd actually be two years before you would collect, so it could be 2013.
Correct.
Because everybody wouldn't reregister in 2011.
Nope.
No, we just, we just make the assumption that half, you know, will register in the first year and half in the second year, and that's not quite accurate either, but it's close for estimating purposes. So, we think that the, the amount that we're suggesting here, the $5 per year, will be enough to pay for the debt service.
Okay. So, no further questions? We'll move into the public hearing portion of this. I am going to-
Point of order.
I don't think that you have that-
That's legal counsel. I do have them write a point of order.
I can't hear you.
Let him ask his question.
All right. Eugene, would you come up and sit and, and ask your question, and-
Okay. I'm Eugene Shaw.
You have three minutes on the clock. This is gonna be considered part of your testimony.
No, just the question.
Oh, just the question?
This is a point of order. The documents that you have presented basically are illegal, and the reason they are illegal is because they state that you're going to approve them and sign them in November of this year, not, not as December. And it says it right here on, I think, I believe it's page five, and you'll wanna take a look at that. But, the question, the question is, do you want to proceed with this without correcting this?
That's not a point of order having to do with the conducting of this meeting, and therefore, you are still within the, the order of the meeting, and you may go forward.
All right. Thank you, Eugene. I appreciate the point of clarification, and I believe that if that is a technical error within the document, we can make that change before the December 9th hearing, the second hearing on this topic. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Agnes. All right. We are all here to hear a diverse set of opinions. We are here to hear all of you, and we wanna make sure that we ask that you respect everybody's opinion, and make sure that if you agree with somebody in, in terms of trying to help us get through this in a timely fashion, so that we can respect your time and get you out of here, since this is the middle of the day, that if you do agree with somebody, please raise your hands. That'll allow us to keep hearing people and still know that you support them. If you do not agree with somebody, I'm gonna ask you to remain quiet and allow that person to continue to move forward with their testimony, and we will certainly be able to hear all the, the different opinions then. We're gonna have everybody provide us with three minutes of testimony. There are 38 of you plus that have signed up, which means there are two hours' worth of hearings here, so I just want you to note that. You did get a number, or you were on the list, and so, you know what number you are in case you have to leave. At some point when we get to the end of each sheet, I'll, I'll remind you where we are in the list so that you know, so you can monitor your own time. And elected officials will be going first, and I will be calling them up now, and after we're done with the elected officials, then we'll move on to the citizens. So, I have a couple elected officials who have signed up, and first on the list, Donna Jordan from Lake Oswego. Thank you for coming. Name and address. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Peterson and County Commissioners. I'm Donna Jordan. I live at 3485 Upper Drive in Lake Oswego, and I am a member of Lake Oswego City Council. I am here today on behalf of the mayor who called on his way out of the country and asked if I would represent the city council at this hearing. And because we didn't have a chance to meet, I did canvass all of the other counselors and got their opinions upon this particular issue. All seven counselors are in favor of supporting this issue for the Clackamas County support for Sellwood Bridge, for the $5 vehicle registration fee, and know that the need is there. We have some differences of opinion on our council about a lot of things, but on this particular issue, all seven counselors agree that this is a necessary fee that should be imposed upon the, the public in Clackamas County. I have one member of our council who is concerned that she would like to have more information if there was a possibility to, because Clackamas County's territory is so large, so broad, that there might be a way of restricting this fee to those people in an urban area that is closer to the use of the Sellwood Bridge rather than imposing it on the entire county. On the other hand, I have other counselors who think that this is a wonderful vehicle to look at for future improvements for roads in Clackamas County as a whole, because we all know there's very little money available and a lot of need. So, just to, to close, we have, have some varying opinions, but all Lake Oswego city counselors are very much in favor of this and support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna. Thanks for coming in today. I guess that's the city counselor, Jordan. We have next, I saw Mayor Norris from Oregon City come in. Mayor Norris, thank you for coming today. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Alice Norris, Mayor of Oregon City, 141 Ogden Drive, Oregon City. We in Oregon City know a little bit about bridges and rivers, since two of our borders are, are rivers. And in fact, our understanding will become quite heightened on January 15th, when ODOT closes the Arch Bridge link, our link to Westland and Highway 43 for two long years for needed rehabilitation. And we've heard nearly two years of extremely valuable and concerned testimony from our business community and our car and bicycle communities, commuters, and freight haulers about this critical transportation link. We know that it will be removed for only two years, so it's not as if we're losing the, the entire bridge, but our entire city council, our city commissioners, support the, the fee because of the vital link that the Sellwood Bridge provides, all the bridges provide. It's compelling testimony that we only have one bridge of the entire system of bridges that's earthquake-proof, and we must be prepared for emergencies. The crossings over the Willamette are few and far between. We need reliability to serve Clackamas County, all of Clackamas County. Reliability is essential for everyday business as well as for emergencies. And it's also compelling that without the Sellwood fixed and usable, we only have the Abernathy Bridge and the Arch Bridge, no crossings until the Ross Island Bridge in Clackamas, for Clackamas County commuters. So, the Sellwood does serve an incredibly important vital transportation link. We use the bridge in large numbers. It, it needs, I think in the interest of equity and fairness, we believe in our community that we need to step up and that this is a small price to pay for reliability, for safety, and for a very important transportation linkage. So, I urge you to support that. I also like the fact that there's a possibility that after this fee, if enacted, would expire, that there's a possibility that communities like ours would urge you to perhaps continue it so that we could serve some transportation needs that each community has that are now unmet, and we don't see a way from meeting those into the future, so.
With the Oswego Highway, and so we plan to spend more time with Multnomah County and the design engineers through the design process. So, we are suggesting an amount of money be used, still Sellwood, specifically Sellwood, not anything else, that would come out of this 22 million for staff time.
Commissioners, any further questions? Can I just add up some of the timeline that you just talked about? If there's 90 days that it would go into effect, that would actually mean nine, somewhere between nine and 12 months before the actual amount would be collected.
Right.
Which means that this would not be in effect until next, hopefully, maybe sometime next year even.
Yes.
At the end of next year, beginning of the following year. So, folks that are perhaps still feeling the recession will hopefully find a little bit of solace in that, that it's not hitting now, it would be hitting the mailbox much later than then.
That's true.
Okay.
Correct.
Other comments?
Yeah. Go right down. I don't think so.
Commissioner Bernard?
So, that means that if your car is already registered, if you register in 2011 for two years, it'd actually be two years before you would collect, so it could be 2013.
Correct.
Because everybody wouldn't re-register in 2011.
No.
No, we just make the assumption that half, you know, will register in the first year and half in the second year, and that's not quite accurate either, but it's close for estimating purposes. So, we think that the amount that we're suggesting here, the $5 per year, will be enough to pay for the debt service.
Okay. So, no further questions? We'll move into the public hearing portion of this. I am going to...
Point of order.
I don't think that you have that...
That's legal counsel. I do have a right to point an order.
I can't hear you.
Let him ask his question.
All right, Eugene, would you come up and sit and ask your question?
Okay. I'm Eugene Shonheit.
You have three minutes on the clock. This is going to be considered part of your testimony.
No, just the question.
Oh, just the question?
This is a point of order. The documents that you have presented basically are illegal, and the reason they are illegal is because they state that you're going to approve them and sign them in November of this year, not as December. And it says it right here on, I think, I believe it's page five, and you'll want to take a look at that. But, the question is, do you want to proceed with this without correcting this?
That's not a point of order having to do with the conducting of this meeting, and therefore, you are still within the order of the meeting, and you may go forward.
All right, thank you, Eugene. I appreciate the point of clarification, and I believe that if that is a technical error within the document, we can make that change before the December 9th hearing, the second hearing on this topic, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Agnes. All right, we are all here to hear a diverse set of opinions. We are here to hear all of you, and we want to make sure that we ask that you respect everybody's opinion, and make sure that if you agree with somebody in terms of trying to help us get through this in a timely fashion, so that we can respect your time and get you out of here, since this is the middle of the day, that if you do agree with somebody, please raise your hands. That'll allow us to keep hearing people and still know that you support them. If you do not agree with somebody, I'm going to ask you to remain quiet and allow that person to continue to move forward with their testimony, and we will certainly be able to hear all the different opinions then. We're going to have everybody provide us with three minutes of testimony. There are 38 of you plus that have signed up, which means there are two hours' worth of hearings here, so I just want you to note that. You did get a number, or you were on the list, and so you know what number you are in case you have to leave. At some point when we get to the end of each sheet, I'll remind you where we are in the list so that you know, so you can monitor your own time. And elected officials will be going first, and I will be calling them up now, and after we're done with the elected officials, then we'll move on to the citizens. So, I have a couple elected officials who have signed up, and first on the list, Donna Jordan from Lake Oswego. Thank you for coming. Name and address. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Peterson and County Commissioners. I'm Donna Jordan. I live at 3485 Upper Drive in Lake Oswego, and I am a member of Lake Oswego City Council. I am here today on behalf of the mayor who called on his way out of the country and asked if I would represent the city council at this hearing. And because we didn't have a chance to meet, I did canvass all of the other counselors and got their opinions upon this particular issue. All seven counselors are in favor of supporting this issue for the Clackamas County support for Sellwood Bridge, for the $5 vehicle registration fee, and know that the need is there. We have some differences of opinion on our council about a lot of things, but on this particular issue, all seven counselors agree that this is a necessary fee that should be imposed upon the public in Clackamas County. I have one member of our council who is concerned that she would like to have more information if there was a possibility to, because Clackamas County's territory is so large, so broad, that there might be a way of restricting this fee to those people in an urban area that is closer to the use of the Sellwood Bridge, rather than imposing it on the entire county. On the other hand, I have other counselors who think that this is a wonderful vehicle to look at for future improvements for roads in Clackamas County as a whole, because we all know there's very little money available and a lot of need. So, just to close, we have some varying opinions, but all Lake Oswego city counselors are very much in favor of this and support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna. Thanks for coming in today. I guess that's the city counselor, Jordan. We have next, I saw Mayor Norris from Oregon City come in. Mayor Norris, thank you for coming today. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Alice Norris, Mayor of Oregon City, 141 Ogden Drive, Oregon City. We in Oregon City know a little bit about bridges and rivers, since two of our borders are rivers. And in fact, our understanding will become quite heightened on January 15th, when ODOT closes the Arch Bridge link, our link to Westland and Highway 43 for two long years for needed rehabilitation. And we've heard nearly two years of extremely valuable and concerned testimony from our business community and our car and bicycle communities, commuters and freight haulers about this critical transportation link. We know that it will be removed for only two years, so it's not as if we're losing the entire bridge. But, our entire city council, our city commissioners, support the fee because of the vital link that the Sellwood Bridge provides, all the bridges provide. It's compelling testimony that we only have one bridge of the entire system of bridges that's earthquake-proof, and we must be prepared for emergencies. The crossings over the Willamette are few and far between. We need reliability to serve Clackamas County, all of Clackamas County. Reliability is essential for everyday business as well as for emergencies. And it's also compelling that without the Sellwood fixed and usable, we only have the Abernathy Bridge and the Arch Bridge, no crossings until the Ross Island Bridge in for Clackamas County commuters. So, the Sellwood does serve an incredibly important vital transportation link. We use the bridge in large numbers. It needs, I think in the interest of equity and fairness, we believe in our community that we need to step up and that this is a small price to pay for reliability, for safety, and for a very important transportation linkage. So, I urge you to support that. I also like the fact that there's a possibility that after this fee, if enacted, would expire, that there's a possibility that communities like ours would urge you to perhaps continue it so that we could serve some transportation needs that each community has that are now unmet, and we don't see a way for meeting those into the future, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Norris. Next on the list, Commissioner Deb Kefory. Multnomah County Commissioner Deb Kefory. Good morning.
Good morning. Excuse me, I have a little bit of a sore throat this morning, so. If I'm hard to understand, I apologize. But, I felt it was very important for me to come this morning. My name is Deborah Kefory. I'm a Multnomah County Commissioner. I live at 6330 Southeast 32nd in Portland, about 10 blocks from the Clackamas County border. I can see it out of my window. I appreciate this opportunity to testify before you today in support of the vehicle registration fee. I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity. As you've heard, this has been an extremely long process. We've known about this need for a new Sellwood Bridge for many, many years. In fact, when it was first built, it was built using recycled pieces from the Burnside Bridge. So, it's an old bridge with old parts. The replacement has been really a unique partnership. It's been a partnership between Multnomah County, Clackamas County, the City of Portland, the State of Oregon, and the federal government. Each jurisdiction has pledged financial support, stepping up to the plate to replace a bridge that rates just 2 out of 100 on the federal sufficiency scale. Unfortunately, it's all too rare for multiple jurisdictions to work together for the benefit of a greater good. Too frequently, parties cannot agree, and the project never gets built, or the program never gets, the problem never gets solved. I can think of one good example of a much larger bridge to the north of us, where they're having this very same struggle. But, I'm happy to report that we have created a roadmap for a different way of doing business. This project is a model for how different jurisdictions can work together for the public good to help all of our citizens. While the bridge is physically located just inside the Multnomah County border, we know that Clackamas County residents and businesses depend on it for their survival. Studies have shown that nearly 70% of the trips over the bridge either start or end in Clackamas County. I realize and appreciate that this is a very difficult decision, but I know that you understand that doing nothing is not an option. Too many of our residents, both in Multnomah County and Clackamas County, depend on the Sellwood Bridge, those who use it directly, and those who depend on the services and the businesses who use it, even if they do not use it themselves. Many people do not realize that if the Sellwood Bridge were to shut down, 30,000 additional cars would be transferred onto our already crowded roadways and bridges. Even if you don't drive over the Sellwood Bridge every day, it is an important piece of our regional transportation system. I'm happy to report that the project is on schedule, and groundbreaking is expected to occur in July of 2012. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have, or is this just public comment?
Well, if there are any questions. No, I just wanted to thank you for the process that you've gone through to get to this place. I know it's been very difficult, but it really has been all-inclusive, and I know that our cities right next to the bridge have been included in these discussions, and that's very much appreciated.
And we look forward to continuing the really amazing partnership. Clackamas County has been at the table. We've had representation through the design process, through the, we look forward to continuing that process until the bridge is built and we can all use it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Last elected official that I have seen walk in is Metro Counselor Rod Park. Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning. Chair Peterson and Commissioners, thank you. For the record, Metro Counselor Rod Park, District One. I represent the easternmost portion of Clackamas and Multnomah Counties within the metro jurisdictional boundaries. This also includes, for just geographical reasons, the, also the unincorporated community of Boring as part of that. The cities in Clackamas County include both Happy Valley and Damascus. We have a great many challenges in the metro region. How do we provide for a growing and aging population? How do we help in creating jobs for our residents? And to pay for all this, how do we create and support the region's economy? All this, at the same time, not diminish our quality of life by needlessly expanding into farmland and neighboring cities of the region, which helped make this a special place to live. The item before you is a longtime coming deferred payment in helping to answer these questions. It is also an example that we've seen in regional cooperation. This region is unique in how that we come together to talk about certain items and issues of concern of not just one county or one city, but of the three counties within the Portland metro region. The region has almost completed the urban and rural reserves, as an example. A process defined where the counties of Washington, Multnomah, and Clackamas Counties, where the region will grow and not grow over the next 50 years. Commissioner Leeann has, as you know, played a pivotal role in helping to move the process. So, thank you again in your participation with Metro and the rest of the counties. While awaiting a final agreement regarding areas in Washington County, Multnomah, and Clackamas, excuse me, in Washington County, Multnomah and Clackamas Counties areas have been set. So, we've set the areas for the next 50 years, and now we need to act not to squander this opportunity. The ordinance before you is very much part of that answer. We must better utilize the already developed areas if we're going to help enable our residents to achieve their desire, desires of higher quality of life. So, as a region, we plan our transportation system. We sit collaboratively around the table at Metro, and each project we examine to see how it contributes to that regional transportation system and the fact of these key investments that are vital. The building and maintaining bridges is essential to sustaining the quality of the region's highways and is vital to the region's ability to support businesses and the safe transportation of goods and people. I have served as the Chair of the Region's Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, and most recently as Chair of the Metro's Freight Task Force. While the Sellwood Bridge is not expected to carry a great amount of freight relatively speaking to the other bridges, it is nonetheless a vital part of the system. And you heard from Commissioner Kefory, why is that? Is because that if it is diverted off of those, that traffic is diverted off those bridges, it ends up on the other region's bridges across the Willamette River, resulting in traffic delays in terms of the region's goods and services as well as people. There is a cost of doing nothing, and those that have looked at the community investment strategy of, may I continue?
If you can wrap up soon.
I will wrap it up as quickly as I can. So, making these critical investments is more difficult in an era of limited resources, growing environmental and economic challenges, and those of us in the current economy know where we're at. So, the legislature has given the region the opportunity to provide for our citizens. We recognize that other outside sources from the federal government and the state is very limited at this time. I would urge you to take this opportunity and enact this ordinance, which is a very small down payment on the region's future. Just for a quick note, even though I don't reside in Clackamas County, though I have a farm in Clackamas County, I reside in Multnomah County. I have seven vehicles. I just figured out it's going to cost me an extra $266 every two years to help provide for this. So, as my contribution towards the regional economy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Metro Counselor Park? No?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. All right, are there any other elected officials in the audience that I may have missed?
He's with the school board.
Are you with the school board?
Yes.
Need to name an address for the record, since I don't have it.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Don Newell. I live at 25041 South Mountain View Road, Colton. And...
And you're with which school district?
I'm with the Colton School District.
And so, you're representing this Colton School District?
I'm representing myself, but you asked for elected officials, and I am second on the list, so.
Okay.
And I'm also on the Colton CPO. I'm the Vice President of Colton CPO.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, where is the money that, where is the money that's supposed to fix the bridge? The money was, is frankly tied up in some poor agreements between Multnomah County and the City of Portland made in the 80s. The bridge was identified in the 80s as having a deficit then, but due to some backdoor handling of some monies with Bloom and our administration, 80% of Multnomah County transportation dollars gets handed over to the City of Portland on top of the City Portland's share of transportation dollars. Again, in the state, 50% of the transportation dollars generally goes to ODOT, 30% go to the counties, 20% go to the cities, and the, that amount of money additional that Portland gets from, that Portland gets from Multnomah County represents about 12% of all the county monies in the state. Now, Portland has, Portland has basically missed, has built everything but put money into the infrastructure and the bridges. And when the bridge, when the roads were inside the City of Portland exchanged, were given to the, to them in the 80s, they refused to take the bridges, which is, which includes the Morrison, Hawthorne, Burnside, and Broadway, even though they were asked to take the bridges at the time. So, the monies that actually to replace this bridge are there. And what I'm asking you Commissioners, that if you go into this agreement with them, that you ask the Multnomah County Commissioners to sunset those agreements between Portland and, and the county, so the county could be, Multnomah County could be empowered to take care of the bridges like they're supposed to be. Again, it's all political. The staff of Multnomah County would appreciate it. It's the Commissioners who don't have the political will to have that battle there. Second of all, we, us folks in the, outside the UGB, we also have needs too. I don't have a problem with the VHR funding mechanism, just think the county roads ought to be fixed first. And Cam, you know that South Holt Road is closed to a slide out there. We have a detour that's, that's the same length or longer than the Sellwood Bridge currently, and it can be, you can put a gravel road surface on that. We got to fix the county road system, the Clackamas County road system first before we start handing our monies over to the Sellwood Bridge in Multnomah County. I gave you a list of some other items there, so take care.
Okay, thank you, Don. All right, I have one other person, Jonathan Nicholas from ODS. Good morning. Jonathan.
My name is Jonathan Nicholas, 601 Southwest 2nd Avenue in Portland. I'm not here today to talk to you about bridges. I don't really care about bridges. What I care about is jobs, and I care about the plight of the people, my neighbors, who don't have them. I'm here today representing ODS, one of the region's largest employers, with more than 1,000 employees, hundreds of whom work every day right here in Clackamas County. Let me be quite clear why I'm here. I'm here because ODS believes this initiative is good for Clackamas County, is good for the county's people, and is good for this county's economy. But, make no mistake, ODS would be here today even were that not the case, because the simple truth is that this initiative is good for everyone in the metropolitan region, and that makes this initiative quite simply the right thing for us all to do. It's the right thing because it demonstrates a commitment by the people of Clackamas County to create a business-friendly environment throughout our region. If the people of Clackamas County want jobs for their children and their grandchildren, they need to step up. This initiative represents a commitment by the people of Clackamas County to work together in the cause of moving people and freight throughout our region, to preserve existing jobs and to create new ones. Oppose this measure, and you endanger existing jobs, and you inhibit the creation of new ones. There are those, and they may be legion, who fail to grasp the importance of the task at hand. Crippled by self-interest, they threaten those they most profess to be concerned about, themselves and their children. Again, make no mistake, the Balkanization of civic interest is a fool's errand. It is a shortcut to nothing but hopelessness. We can thrive together, or we can wither apart. The Sellwood Bridge is a key component of a vibrant transportation ecosystem. It's a piece that happens to be particularly dominated in its use by the people of Clackamas County as they head to and from their jobs. Yet, it's now increasingly clear that without the commitment of this board and this county, the very future of this bridge is imperiled, putting countless jobs at risk. Without a modern Sellwood span, it's surely clear that many residents of this county would indeed find alternate routes, but they would do so only at the enormous cost of increased vehicle miles traveled and increased carbon emissions. And those two civic horrors, of course, if that weren't enough, we would also be consigning more people to spend more time in their cars, and there is no greater threat to public health than confining people to their cars. There's no longer any debate in the medical community, the evidence is in. I ask you all to play the key role today and to enjoy the support of everyone in Clackamas County in this critical measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you for coming in today. All right, I'm going to start calling folks up two by two to allow for more efficiency and time. So, I have Jim Needham and John Knotts. Morning. I think you've probably got it, but three minutes on the clock, and name and address for the record. Jim?
Good morning, Chair Peterson and County Commissioners. My name is Jim Needham. I live at 680 Merritt Drive, Molalla, Oregon. I am also a member of the Molalla City Council, representing myself. There are many questions that the citizens of Clackamas County and Molalla have expressed in regard to this clandestine vehicle registration fee proposal. Why is a two-lane bridge chosen to be a lifeline bridge due to proposed disaster resistance construction across Willamette and Portland? Why is the county commission delayed the promised discussion of this question until after the election? Why is there a fundamental lack of citizen knowledge or public discussion of this issue, contrary to Board of Commissioners, Chair Peterson's promise to, quote, "have a conversation with the public," end quote? When there was a meeting held September 20th, 2010, why were only mayors and city administrators invited and notified? Why was a stipulation included in House Bill 2001 that counties with a population greater than 350,000 could approve the participation in the vehicle registration fee without election consent? When Commissioner Leininger requested an explanation of why the funds were needed, it was pointed out that they would be used for streetcar or light rail if not required. This process seems to reek of an intentional suppression of public opinion and manipulation of public discussion to enable the county commission to make a unilateral decision without proper engagement of public participation. I was asked to make a request that if there is not sufficient time to conduct all of the testimony at this hearing, that the next meeting be performed in the evening to make it more accessible to people who work. And that is the extent of my testimony. Thank you.
Don?
Chair, Commissioners, residents, thank you for this opportunity. My first meeting. Hopefully, I can speak only for myself, and maybe on behalf of those folks on a fixed income, elderly, disabled, those sorts of people who are basically out of money. I have four motorcycles. I think this was mentioned earlier. All total, I have 11 vehicles. I pay $48 every two years for each one. If this issue passes, and I have no control over it, I have but one choice. That is to take about six or seven of my vehicles and no longer register them. You figure the math. Is it worth it for $45 or $90 that I will take back in my wallet 300-plus dollars by the time I register or buy tires, and the trickle-down effect on those vehicles I work on? Although this may seem very insignificant at this point, and I'm only one individual, I thought I'd share those feelings with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in today. I have the next two names, Libby Wentz and Eugene Shonheit. Libby, we'll name your name and address for the record.
Okay, thank you. My name's Libby Wentz. My address is 545 Collins Crest, Gladstone, Oregon. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I've lived in Clackamas County 14 years, and my husband and I have owned a small business since 2004. I adore Clackamas County, and I abhor how we're behaving more and more like Multnomah County. If Portland and Multnomah County want people who use the Selwood Bridge to pay for it, then let them use a toll bridge, and let the cars, bikes, and pedestrians who use it pay. I'm skeptical of the percentage of use attributed to Clackamas County, and I resent an increase on my vehicle registration to build a Portland bike path. The fact that half of the bridge appears to be for a bike path instead of cars, not that Tacoma could support any more cars on it anyway, to me seems really short-sighted. I also resent being forced to support Milwaukee Light Rail projects, and I think that's a bad idea. I think its ultimate purpose is to feed consumers to downtown Portland. I'm afraid that the money's going to be used for light rail for the train, and I unapprove of that either. Clackamas County is putting itself further in debt, and I ask you, our Commissioners, to be financially responsible with my money. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene?
I'm Eugene Schoenheit, 13780 Southeast Fern Ridge, Clackamas County, of course. I'm here to represent myself and people who have taken the survey. I had asked Americans for Prosperity to do a survey of county residents. They basically called 20,000 people, or 20,000 residents within the county. Residents were chosen at a random from all areas of the county, and over 1,225 responded to the survey. Three questions were asked in the survey. Number one, do you support Clackamas County paying $22 million for replacement, or to replace the Selwood Bridge in Multnomah County? Yes was 298, no was 959. Basically, 76% of the people we surveyed said no. The second question, do you support the county Commissioners' proposed new vehicle registration fee on all vehicles within Clackamas County? We had yes 199, no 990. Basically, 83% of the people surveyed said no. And the third question, do you support Milwaukee Light Rail and its funding? We had 333 yes and 818 no. In other words, 71%. And Mr. Bernard, you made a statement several meetings ago that you felt that this was a representative form of government in Clackamas County. The survey base clearly shows that, you know, people are against the bridge and light rail. As a representative, are you going to represent what the people in the county want? And the same question to the rest of county Commissioners. You know, your people have spoken. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Eugene.
Do you like the question? No.
Janet Schoenheit and Bill McKee. Janet, we'll need your name and address.
Hi, I'm Janet Schoenheit, 13780 Southeast Fern Ridge Avenue, Milwaukee. Multnomah County chose to replace the Selwood Bridge for $330 million rather than to repair it for $50 million. After that fact, Chair Peterson, you decided that our county should help pay Multnomah County for their new bridge. It does not seem fair that we should have a vehicle registration fee imposed on us to help pay them for their much more expensive choice, which we didn't have any say in. Neither does it sound proper for you to set a new precedent of our county paying part of another county's expenses. Nor do citizens believe that 70% of our residents cross the Selwood Bridge daily to work in Portland. I worked 14 years in Portland and didn't any day. I am one of a group of 3,000 county citizens who are watching and speaking up to government waste. Your proposed fee has enlarged that group by 155 more citizens. We, the citizens, are your employers and ask you not to place further expense on us. Vote no on the vehicle registration fee and on any further fees or taxes.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, Bill McKee, 16268 Southeast Southside Lane, Milwaukee. I don't have a lot to add beyond what the people before me have stated. That is Jim Needham's questions. I think that they were very good questions to ask. Eugene had gone to a lot of work to put together a survey of actual people who are going to be paying these taxes. You see, we are the taxpayers, and we're looking, we're being asked to pay for a new tax, another new tax. The general feeling is that we have enough taxes, we need to spend our money better. Is this a worthy project? Well, that's an open question. I think that perhaps it is, but this funding mechanism, I don't think, is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. All right, we've got two more folks coming up. We've got Jim Myers and Harold Hart. Jim?
Thank you. My name is Jim Myers. My address is 40120 South Sautel Road, Molalla. I've been a resident of Clackamas County for over 50 years. When I was going to college, Portland State, in the mid-'60s, I did use the Selwood Bridge because of where I lived, behind the Pendleton Woolen Mills. It was very easy to take River Road, cross the Selwood Bridge, go up McAdam. After I moved to Oregon City, my sophomore year, I never used the Selwood Bridge again. I think in the last 45 years, I've used the Selwood Bridge maybe a half dozen times. I do have a couple of questions, and the first one would be, if we're going to impose a $5 fee on registration, according to Clackamas County records, in 2009, there were 85,000 vehicles in Clackamas County. That $5 fee would amount to $425,000 a year. At that rate, it would take over 51 years to pay off the $21 million. I heard said that there was a survey done, which I would very much like to see, because I also don't feel that 70% of the use of the Selwood Bridge is by Clackamas County residents, but the study that was done claimed that a toll system would not work. Well, at 25 cents or even 50 cents a vehicle on 30,000 vehicles, that would equate to $15,000 a day, or, as I calculate, $5,475,000 a year in tolls. A toll system is not adequate to fund the replacement of the Selwood Bridge. Lastly, I would just like to say, I've heard several people say that the Selwood Bridge is critical to commerce and to Clackamas County. I do dispute that. I don't feel that it is critical. I think we could get by without it. Would I like to see it gone? No, obviously not. But we've got 10, 12 other bridges that we can use. I think we need to seriously look at this, and we need to spend our money in a more prudent way. I have a business in Clackamas County. I have 21 vehicles. My only option is to move my business outside of the county to another county and reregister those vehicles if you go ahead with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thought occurs to me that we should probably keep track of the questions being asked, get them up on the web in the next week before the December 9 hearing to make sure that they're answered, if that's okay with everybody. I was hearing enough questions that we won't be able to individually talk to everybody.
We have staff here that are taking these questions down and put the eye towards.
Could I ask one last question? Is it possible to get a copy of this report from 1996, 2000?
94.
Certainly.
Yeah.
How would I go about doing that? Is it available on the web?
We'll make it available.
It is, but we can make it available.
Yeah, we'll make it available on our website. I think we'll have a Selwood link already up there, so thank you. It just occurred to me while you were speaking, we need to make sure that we're going to get that information back to you. So Harold.
Yes, my name's Harold Hart. I live at 1260 Farview Court, West Lynn, Oregon. And I'm on a fixed income, and we're already paying a fee for the Arch Bridge for motor vehicle registration. And why should we pay for the bridge that they're wanting to repair? And once you enact a fee, it is never, ever removed. I've never seen one come off because it is a tax, it's permanently there. It will never, ever come off my lifetime, or my grandkid's lifetime, or their kid's lifetime. So I'm against the proposal for vehicle registration, and if we're going to register, let's do the bicycles as well. There's more bicycles out there than there are cars. Because they have the same rights to that road that I do, and they don't pay a thing. They have usage, they don't have to obey the traffic laws. They've exempted them from stop signs. I've seen so many people pull out in front of me at an intersection on bicycles because they disregard the traffic. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming in. All right, I'm at number 21, just so you know where we're at, and Steve Shop and Jim Greenman. Steve, name an address for the record.
I'm Steve Shop. I live at 10475 Southwest Helenius in Twolton, and I'm here because this is a product of J-PAC, the Regional Transportation, and Metro and Trimit. Unlike most people here, I'm here because you're out of control, and you're forcing the public to take the time to intervene and stop you. You're piling up debt, making commitments that should not be made, neglecting real needs, and raiding resources intended for schools and public safety. Now with this latest scheme, you're trying to backfill the millions already misappropriated by enacting a new tax. The Chair, J-PAC, and Metro just recently took millions more from the region's flex funds for Milwaukee Light Rail. This one source of funding alone is now set to devour $178 million from Milwaukee Light Rail in regional dollars that could be used for the Selwood Bridge or any other regional need. We know there has been and is money available from many sources from Multnomah County's Selwood Bridge, but this commission has participated in the misdirecting of countless millions and now demands a new tax. This current chapter is a continuation of a lengthy pattern of deferring things like the Selwood Bridge in order to build West, the Green Line, and now the $1.5 billion Milwaukee Light Rail, all without public votes. Either the Selwood Bridge or Milwaukee Light Rail are priorities for Clackamas County. The commission is flat-out wrong and is making them so. What does the county need? Your own Clackamas County White Paper, Transportation Futures, says county volumes will nearly double by 2030. Internal trips are projected to increase 65% to 68%. Vehicle miles with unacceptable service will increase by over 1,000% in East Clackamas County. Lane miles operating at unacceptable levels during PM peak in this area will increase from 12 miles to 150 lane miles. And really, this is the clincher here. In your own white paper report, it says the traffic model also shows that the vast majority of people do not commute from east to west or vice versa across the Willamette River. That's your study. Your insistence on wrongly prioritizing Trimit and Metro's agenda with Milwaukee Light Rail and the Lake Oswego Streetcar led to the shell game to fund the Selwood Bridge. This is why so many people here see you as government lobbyists pushing another county's agenda at the expense of Clackamas County needs. The Selwood Bridge.
No, I mean. I'm sorry. Can you just, can you stop? I need everybody to understand, and I'll give you your time back, I need everybody to understand, this just lengthens the entire meeting when you do that, because we cannot hear, and I will interrupt the speaker every time that happens, and this meeting will become much longer. So if you could just raise your hands, you were doing so well. I very much appreciate it. Steve, go ahead.
The Selwood Bridge is the only legitimate project, but it's a Portland project with a Portland design with 37 feet of pedestrian bike service and only 24 feet of road. And there's a push to have a streetcar on the road portion. Again, as J-PAC member activists, Clackamas County Commissioners have participated in the misappropriation of hundreds of millions in Metro Flex Funds that should and still could be used for this Multnomah County Bridge. Instead, the shell game has you pushing for a new tax while Mayor Sam Adams is imagining a $20 million excess in Selwood Bridge funding that can then be taken and moved to fund Milwaukee Light Rail, presumably soon after Clackamas County misappropriates the $22 million.
We stopped the clock, so if you just want to finish up. We had stopped the clock, and you were good to go for 30 seconds, so continue and finish up.
It's no surprise that the agenda from Portland is being used, because on your own county website, it says here, and you both signed, all of you signed on to this, "We have watched with great interest as Portland City Commissioner Sam Adams reaches out to Portland citizens to discuss ideas to raise several hundred million dollars for needed transportation improvements in the city. This is not an easy discussion, but it cannot be avoided much longer. While Commissioner Adams may be raising a difficult topic, his willingness to bring this issue forward to the public is a model for other elected officials to follow." This was signed by all of you, and I would contend that, in closing, that I have a better idea for you all. Surrender now and save the wasted time and money that will force you to stop. Halt the car tax effort, stop your participation in the Milwaukee Light Rail and Selwood Bridge, and lobby hard Metro, J-PAC, and the state to reallocate the billion and a half that would be wasted on Milwaukee Light Rail and the Lake Oswego Streetcar. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Greenman.
Yes, Commissioners, my name is Jim Greenman. I live at 19751 South Ferguson Terrace in Oregon City. As a consulting engineer, I have been searching for the background data that's led to the decisions that seem to be predominant among the elected officials here, and I've been unable to find them, the studies, the actual studies on which you all are basing your opinions. Now, I've heard a lot of skepticism in prior speakers, because these people don't believe or are skeptical of the studies. I think that the commission would be doing us all a favor if you posted all the background data that led to the conclusions that have thus been formed. The second thing is, I think that in our, Clackamas County has a lot of unfunded road responsibilities right now. We own those roads, we Clackamas County residents do. We will not own the bridge. We will not have any legal interest in the bridge, as I understand it, until some form of agreement that assures that any money that gets spent on that bridge on the part of Clackamas County residents can be formed. I'm extremely skeptical of any payments in that regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Marvin Plennert, correct? Did I get that right? And Bob Greenwood.
I guess I just will start.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wasn't it supposed to be somebody over here?
Yeah, that's what I was waiting for.
I feel lonely up here.
Go ahead, Marvin.
My name is Marvin Plennert, and I reside at 20500 South Tranquility Lane, Oregon City, which is in Clackamas County. And I know this is not a hearing to determine whether or not we should build or replace the Selwood Bridge, but a hearing to determine how to pay for it, or how to raise fees. I also know that you, as county officials, do not need to be reminded that we are still in a deep recession. But I think you and other state and federal officials need to be reminded from time to time that we are still losing jobs, losing income, and therefore, we are still, our economy is still in a world of hurt. And now is not the time to impose additional fees or taxes on us as county residents. Yet, government, you continue to spend money that you do not have. I therefore do not support this vehicle registration fee. It may be only five bucks today, but surely it will raise like every other fee. Just look at the states around that have sales tax. They start low and end up high, and they never go away. Perhaps raising fees should be put before county voters rather than imposed by county officials. Therefore, we would all have a chance to vote on this before it happens. And as I said earlier, when one adds taxes or fees, they never go away. And all of our incomes are shrinking right now, and I don't think is the right time to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Bob Greenwood, not here? All right.
He's there, but he doesn't want to testify.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks, Bob. Delburn Williamson and Paul Riggs. Name and address for the record. Three minutes on the clock.
My name is Paul Riggs. I reside at 7026 North Concord, Portland, Oregon. I'm here representing Columbia Pacific Building and Construction Trades Council. We have thousands of construction workers unemployed in Clackamas County. I understand the unpalatability of this tax, but you have to look at the importance of this bridge. Name an address for the record. Three minutes on the clock.
My name is Paul Riggs. I reside at 7026 North Concord, Portland, Oregon. I'm here representing Columbia Pacific Building and Construction Trades Council. We have thousands of construction workers unemployed in Clackamas County. I understand the unpalatability of this tax, but you have to look at the importance of this bridge to the region. There are two major bridge projects in this area. Of course, one of them is the Interstate Bridge, and this is the other one. This one has proceeded admirably. The Interstate Bridge probably won't be built in my lifetime if I live another 20, 30 years. Now, that's not going to be supported by the people behind the bridge, but that's the political reality of it, in my mind. But they're both very necessary. When you look at the big picture, you look where that traffic's going, 30,000 cars a day going across that bridge, they must be going somewhere. They're going to work. I can tell you that when I lived in rural Clackamas County, some classes were not offered at Portland Community. That's where I went, and that's the route I took. It's the quickest, most direct route from the area I lived in, and that's how I was able to use the bridge. I do not only say build the bridge, but look to the big picture for the jobs it'll create here, and also the economic development it'll create here because a lot of the work to make that bridge can be done here locally. You have iron and steel companies here in Clackamas County. You have people who can do the work here in Clackamas County, and a lot of them, again, are unemployed. This is an opportunity to keep the money here, keep the jobs here when that construction goes, just write it into the agreement. And additionally, when you look at the $5 a year per vehicle and then go across the river to where they're looking at a $5 toll each direction, it's a bargain. $10 a day versus $5 a year, the residual effects to the economy, strengthening the infrastructure. I would say, no, I wouldn't like the tax, but yes, I would pay it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. So, Delburn Williamson.
65.
Okay, thanks. Dale McKay and Mike Vandewegh. Vandewegh, is that right? Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, my name is Dale McKay. I live at 19872 White Cloud Circle, West Lynn. Nobody questions the need for the replacement of the Selwood Bridge. It's just a responsibility of who's to pay for it. Now, I've lived in Clackamas County for 45 years, and I've never once heard of Multnomah County helping us to pay for our roads going up to Mount Hood, even though most of the people going to Mount Hood come from the Portland area. So, if they don't reciprocate, how do we feel our responsibility to help them? And also, I question the 70% that cross the Selwood Bridge. For five years, I crossed the Selwood Bridge two times a week. In those five years, I have never once seen a line that was smaller on the Portland side coming from Portland going onto the bridge than coming from Clackamas County to go onto the bridge. So I really question that figure, and I think that we ought to stay home and take care of our own roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike.
My name's Mike Vandewegh. I'm at 33150 Southeast Leewood Lane, Boring. Sharon Peterson, and Charlotte, Bob, Jim. I appreciate the opportunity to talk for just a second. I just had an idea this morning that I think the difference between a representative-type government and an oppressive government is that in a representative-type government, our elected officials are people who work for us, sacrifice. In an oppressive government, the people sacrifice. What I would suggest is that there's a lot of things that don't ever get, anymore in our day, don't get sacrificed by our elected officials. That would be one. Your level of comfort with the people that you work with every day, the level of comfort that you maintain when you're asking, say, your county sheriff to submit his budget and then approving that budget. Your level of comfort in buildings like this, I look around my business. I can't afford two-tone carpets. I can't afford maple chairs and tables. I can't afford mirrors in the top of my elevators. I can't afford an elevator. Couldn't we, as a county, look around? Maybe at our expansive landscaping on this beautiful campus and say, how much benefit, what does that do for us as a county to get our necessary services taken care of? There's a presumption here that all of the funding that you already have is being used to the most efficient, at the most efficient manner. And you're coming to me and you're saying, Mike, you know, Charlotte, Bob, Lynn, Jim, you're saying, Mike, we need another $50 a year from you, because I've got 10 vehicles in my business. We need another $50 from you every year because we can't afford to build a bridge. By the way, I believe the bridge is necessary. I don't like the design, but I believe the commerce is necessary. You're saying, we need $50 from you so we can build a bridge. And I'm saying, you've already taken quite a bit of my money. What are you doing with it? And I look around and I see a lot of neat stuff that I don't see as really helping the commerce of my county. That's been a result of the ongoing attitude that there's more than enough to purchase, you know, excess, from my perspective, where it is not needed. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in today. Thomas Eskridge and Sonia Polly.
Sharon Peterson, how are you?
Hi, name an address for the record.
Thomas Eskridge. I live at 13943 South Herman Road in Alala. And a lot of the things that have been said today, I agree with. I don't believe that we have as much traffic on that bridge as the report does. I don't even know how they make a report like that unless they sit and take a picture of every single car that goes across that bridge for an entire year and look into the county records to see who owns that car and who lives there. Now, how much did that cost? I'd like to know. But so many things have been said here that I don't need to go back into, but one or two things. If this is the only bridge that is earthquake-safe in this entire area, and it is only a two-lane bridge, what in the world are the people designing it thinking? If we're going to spend this kind of money to build a safety net that we can get across the river if there's a disaster, earthquake, and it's two lanes, that's ridiculous. And another issue is the bicycles. There is not a single person in Clackamas County, I would venture to say, that rides their bicycle across the Selwood Bridge. Not one. Maybe you, okay. Well, there's one. Okay, we'll put that one down. Okay, and I appreciate you do that. But I think that bicycle people, if we're going to charge the car people to a fee on their, renewing their registrations, then there's got to be a registration for bicycle people as well. And I think that one gentleman talked about the, when we drive up to a stop sign and the bicycle people drive right on through. I mean, they should share the road with us and obey the rules with us, and they don't. And there's so many times I sit and I tell my wife, I wish I was a cop because I'm sitting at a stop sign there, the bicycles keep going through. Now, I don't know, maybe they'll get hit one day from cross-traffic. I don't know. I certainly would stop if it was me. But those are my two things that I want to add and support, is that this bridge should be bigger than it is. And, well, one other thing, I've written up 39 seconds, 29 seconds. I don't think $5 fee will do it. I don't think a $40 fee would do it. But I'm against them both. Thank you.
Thanks. Sonia.
My name is Sonia Polly. Post Office Box 67109, Milwaukee. I would like to ask some questions about the kind of a bridge they want to build. You know, Multnomah County, they're building the Dream Bridge, and what they should be looking to is the example that was set by Minnesota when their bridge collapsed, and they built a larger bridge than what we're talking about for the Columbia River Crossing, many more lanes, for half the amount of money that our people are talking about spending. So if Multnomah County were really serious about maintaining its bridges, they would forget about the Columbia River Crossing and the McLaughlin Light Rail that they're proposing, since both the people have voted against these things many, many times, but it doesn't make any difference that we vote against them. It still is on the agenda to happen. We really, like we've talked about representative government, we don't get any voice because we vote, and they just override the vote and go right ahead. There isn't any need for the McLaughlin Light Rail. I see the buses there many times, and they're never full. And buses are flexible. They can be rearranged according to people's needs. Light Rail is permanent and very, very expensive and not flexible at all. So, I don't think that Multnomah County is in a position to even be asking the federal government for money for projects like the McLaughlin Light Rail or the Columbia River Crossing. We all know that the federal government is broke. They don't have money. Why are we continuing to ask for more? This is just insanity. And so, I think that there was one point in your little brochure that you handed out which said that after 2013, you could start using the money for other projects around here. So it's not really about the Selwood Bridge. Clackamas County is going to be expected to help pay for anything. We should have some input on what happens on that bridge. Whatever happened to the idea of repairing it for 50 million, or 50 billion, whatever, a trillion, I don't know. These days, it doesn't seem to matter that much. So, you know, we don't have any choice in that. We just have to build the deluxe thing with the bike trails and the light rail and the little skinny rails for the cars to go through. And that's not what we're talking about and need. This doesn't fix anything. This makes a bigger problem for all of us. So we wish that you would be paying attention to what the people are trying to tell you. We don't want light rail. It incorporates crime into our communities. Just look at the wonderful thing that it did for aggression. They didn't have any crime before. We don't have, we have a fair share already, but we're going to get more because light rail will make it easy for those folks to get here. We don't want it, and we don't need it. So, I guess that's the main input that I would like to offer. So, say no to these projects. We don't owe it.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to ask Bill Merchant and Ken Howard to come up. We're at 33 and 34 out of about 43, so we've got about 10 more people, so.
17. Not a good one, I guess.
And you are Ken Howard?
I'm Ken Howard, 26655 Southeast Odell Road, Eagle Creek. I have lived in Oregon, Eagle, excuse me, I've lived in Clackamas County over 50 years as well, born here in Oregon City. And I want to remind you folks, Commissioners, that the Constitution of the United States was founded on limited government, limited taxes, limited fees, limited regulations. And I'm thinking when I mention regulations, I'm thinking about the tree ordinance, the Fifth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment, both guaranteed life, liberty, and property. And for the tree ordinance, you have chosen to take away our property rights, and that's the type of thing that you guys do. So we need to get back to limited government, to respecting the people that pay the taxes and the fees. And we don't, a lot of us are out of work. I'm a high-tech programmer. I trade. I've been laid off so many times since 2001, four times. I'm now driving school bus at one quarter the wage I used to get. So we don't have the money for new taxes or new fees, and we don't like all these new regulations that you're forcing on us in Clackamas County without voting, without allowing us to vote on them. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Bill, I think I saw Bill Merchant leave earlier, so I will move on to Sherri Lane, and I'm going to say your last name wrong, Solardis? Thanks. And John McAdoo?
McAdoo.
McAdoo, sorry. I think I got it wrong last time, too, John, didn't I? Uh-huh. Sherri Lane, go ahead.
Thank you.
Name an address for the record in three minutes.
Sherri Lane, Salyards, 16006 South Springwater Road in Oregon City. It's been stated that each of the jurisdictions, the cities, the counties, the states, and the federal government are working together and are doing so well, working on this project together. That's great, and funding is coming from all of those areas. It's coming from my right pocket, my left pocket, my right back pocket, and my left back pocket. And sometimes, we forget that, that the money, I sent money into the federal government, to the state, to the county, and the municipalities. We need to instead scrutinize where we're getting these funds and how we're doing this, you know, building a new bridge versus repairing it, taking account where we are financially. Yes, it would be great to hope that the recession's done in a year and a half or two years, and everyone's back up on their feet and doing very well economically. But history has taught us that when we make hopes like that and go ahead and spend and get ourselves in a position financially, that it's crunching, and we'll find ourselves between a rock and another big rock. And it's going to, it's not going to be able to sustain itself that way. Just as I would not go to my employer and say, hey, you know, my furnace broke down, I knew that eventually I'd have to replace it, but I need a race. It doesn't go over well with my employer. And I think that's where most of the people's angst is coming from. It's like, whoa, wait a minute. We have these roads and bridges that are supposed to be taken care of, and the different counties and municipalities that are in charge of those. We need to have that planning, yes, but we also need to take into account unexpected things and be able to make our budgets align with what responsibilities we have. So therefore, I say, let's go back, scrutinize, prioritize, and cut and prune as we need to. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, John.
My name's John McAdoo. I live at 26588 South Morgan Road in Estacada. I'm speaking in opposition of this registration fee. I reflect back that the state of Oregon implemented a 3-cent gas tax about five years back to rebuild bridges in the state of Oregon. We know when those bridges are rebuilt that 3-cent gas tax will not go away. Registration was increased by the state of Oregon, almost doubled. I know I'm registering two cars this month, $84 apiece for two years. Unemployment in Oregon, you know where that's at, underemployment, people on fixed incomes. We just cannot, these people and myself, I cannot just take, keep taking these fees. They eat up more and more of my net income for providing for my family. I look at my property taxes when I pay them, they average go up $100 a year. So that's $100 net off of my net income. We've got school bonds in Estacada, we've got library bonds, that's school bond, and I'm not opposed to fixing schools and keeping them safe for children. I'm just saying, that's another $300 a year that comes off of my net income for providing for my family. That's some money that if I put away for five years, I could take grandchildren to Disneyland. So that takes away from that. Again, I'm one for not using light rail. I'm opposed to light rail. As you look at the statistics on light rail for the money, $6 million a mile is what I'm reading, and the ridership is about 1% or 2% in that. And when we have nasty weather, that light rail is shut down. Buses are more efficient than light rail. You could even run little 15-passenger buses through the community and take them to a central point and put them on buses, be a lot cheaper than light rail. So I'm suggesting, as others have mentioned here, to use the light rail money and let Multnomah County build their own bridge. And one last point I would say is Estacada Fire District wants to build a new fire station. They've been looking at it for a long time, but they know that the economy that we are in right now, that we have... in right now, that we have decided to postpone this for three to five years to save our taxpayers' money and see what the economy does down the line. Thank you very much for my time.
Thank you both. All right. No, we're going to keep to the hand raising. I appreciate that. Bob Carl and Edwin Bell are up next.
Hi.
Need your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Carl. I'm at 2913 Carriage Way, West Lynn. It's true that Clackamas County residents use the Selwood Bridge, but much of that traffic contributes to Portland's and/or Multnomah County's economy. Why are Clackamas County motorists being Portland's patsies? Specifically, for which uniquely Clackamas County projects have Multnomah County residents been taxed and when? Do you actually know how many people from Malala or Damascus or Boring or whatever use the Selwood Bridge? Most likely, many from there have never used it and never will use it. Why are automotive owners being singled out to bear the burden of a multipurpose facility? We're assured that excess funds raised will be distributed to cities and county, but why shouldn't you have to return those funds to the people who have paid those fees? Are bicycle paths included in the plans? And if so, why are Multnomah County bicyclists not required to fund the bridge that they will use for mostly recreational purposes? The cost to accommodate bicyclists far exceeds the cost for motorists. Bicycle and pedestrian paths take up valuable additional surface area and construction that either could be eliminated to save a lot of money or could be used to provide wider motor vehicle lanes. And Portland's municipal government has wasted public resources pursuing a leftist policy of harassing businesses and motorized traffic to consolidate political power from bicyclists, government unionists and so on. Why should Clackamas motorists have to make up for the squandering of tax monies by those in another jurisdiction? $5 is not a particularly large amount, but this type of backdoor taxation is pernicious. If $5 is okay, why not $25 or $125? Bottom line, it's sneaky, it's dangerous and it's corrupt.
Yes, next.
I'm Edwin Bell. I live at 8508 Southeast Jamson Road in Clackamas. I'm opposed to this fee. I don't use the Selwood Bridge. It only leads to Portland and I don't know why anyone would go there. One of the things that I've noticed about things that go on in Portland is, number one, nothing is ever built that's just utilitarian. It's always a grandiose project of some kind to put us in a magazine or some other national publication and get somebody patted on the back. The other is, nothing ever comes in less than two or three times its original estimate. And if the original estimate of paying for this bridge for us is $5, what's going to be the final estimate? And as has been said before, once something like this is enacted, it is, at least not in my memory, ever been taken off. When a project is completed, why then there's always another project that needs a little more and there's no end to it. So that's about all I have to say. I'm against it. Not on principle that we don't need the bridge. I believe we do. But I believe the design that they're put out is one of these, it's a Cadillac bridge and what we got is Chevrolet money. And we need to, we need to build within our resources. And I'm not so sure that Multnomah County has handled their money in such a way that we should enable them to keep doing it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Edwin. Next to Mac Woods and Dale Seal. I'm onto the last page. About four or five folks, just so you know.
Thank you. I'm Mac Woods. I live at 11677 South Maxburg Road in Canby, Oregon, beautiful downtown Maxburg community. And I address this to each one of you commissioners. What has Clackamas County become? Has Clackamas County become the land of the special interests and home of the double standard? Let's see. If we lie to Clackamas County, it's a felony. And if the county lies to us, it's just politics. We have to swallow what they call political verbiage. It's the First Amendment right. The county spends thousands of taxpayers' dollars on research to protect a tree on other people's property and nothing to protect the victim or property owner. The county is unable to protect the illegals from planting marijuana on state or government lands, including our farms out in the country. Yet, the county can tell us how and what trees we can grow on our own property. If you protect your land from illegal trespassers by President's policies, you're a terrorist, according to him and the Attorney General. You take money from those who work hard to earn it and give it to those who don't want to work at all. We all support the Constitution, but only when it supports ideology, not ambiguous fees. We still have freedom of speech, but only when it's politically correct and supports your wasteful spending. And how do we handle a major crisis in Clackamas County today, like the bridge project, when the county appoints a committee to determine who or what is best for our cars, us, the taxpayers and the voters, of which they know nothing about when the economy is upside down? Then you raise our taxes and fees to cover your mistakes so you can go back to your reelection campaigns that's less than two years away. And we're watching your vote very closely. What has happened to the land of the free and the home of the brave? We're watching you and your votes. Let me tell you something. It's less than two years to election and we're going to see change in this county.
All right. I'm, thank you. Thank you for keeping it down. Dale?
Yes, I'm Dale Seal of Clackamas, actually, Happy Valley. Thanks for the chance to let us testify. I've been asked to, if we could have a larger hearing room in a different hour for the December 9th hearing. There's a lot of people that could not make it the day before Thanksgiving. And they would also like, if possible, to have an evening chance to be able to sound off regarding this vehicle tax.
Your testimony?
That would be my request. Of the poll that was cited earlier, there was 25,000 polled. And of those, it was heavily skewed, actually not maybe necessarily heavily, but significantly skewed in favor of Democrats. 7,700 poll questions went to Republicans, 11,700 went to Democrats, 4,500 went to unaffiliated and 970 went to others. And that was out of 25,000. Of those who responded, Democrats responded almost 600 votes. Republicans responded 451, unidentified 189, for a total of 1,225 responses this week regarding the three questions. Do you support the Clackamas County as a goal to impose 22 million to replace the Selwood Bridge? Yes or no, do you support the county commissioner's proposed new vehicle registration fee on vehicles within Clackamas County? Yes or no, do you support Milwaukee Light Rail and its funding? So the responses were amazing, to see an overwhelming, like we're talking 70, 80 percentages. And of those, just as much Democrats oppose this, which is the party that you here on this commission represent. So I can't imagine that you would go forward with this and there's nothing to stop it from going from $5 when it's passed this year to 80, which is because, as you know, Oregon does it every other year. So what if it's a $40 fee? It's going to be an $80 fee. And there's nothing to stop this. So I would propose to those in this room, and I thank every one of them for coming today to testify, we could be with our families and we would like to be with our families. But the fact that we have almost 200 people here and some in the overflow room, I might add as well, to stand up and say, we don't want this. In fact, we not only don't, we don't want it, we're not going to stand for it, no matter what the outcome is, we will, I think most of the people in here are willing to step up and get signatures. And I'm sure there's some chief petitioners here in this group that will stand up and say, we're going to overturn this as soon as it's passed. So I don't know why you would put us through this anymore. I have three cents. On you, you're this commission, you supported Measure 66 and 67. That vote is going to cost you three entrepreneurs to come to this county after they graduate from college. Those are my cents. And they're all potential business owners. And they're not going to come back here to this county. Now, what else do you want to do? Chase people, businesses out of this county, raise their taxes, impose new fees to pay for Multnomah County? Multnomah County, I've got 36 seconds. This is an important point. They diverted $20 million from the sewer to bike paths. That is $20 million that should have gone to the Clean Water Act to prevent, over the last 10 years, 30 billion gallons of sewage overflows in the Portland Public Sewer, combined overflows. And you know what I'm talking about, into the Wallamette River that the Selwood Bridge crosses. Is that responsible for Multnomah County to divert money to bike paths when they should be paying for their sewer repairs? The Big Pipe has not been a success, Phase Two. I'm very skeptical. I don't think so. And we would be enabling them to send them more money for their failed policies. Thank you.
All right. Melanie, I'm going to get your last name wrong, Wochnik? Melanie? And Warren Kitchen? There you are, Warren. And Herb Chow? Okay. Yeah, I don't think that Melanie's here. Warren, name and address for the record and five minutes.
My name is Warren Kitchen. I live at 18211 South Treetop Drive, Oregon City. It seems to me that this has, once again, come down between government and the people. We've had the mayor, Alice Norris, and other government officials in here, and they're all in support of this, which strikes me as more of a backroom deal, that people are going to split up the money. So, so to speak, it's like the 30 pieces of silver. I think it's time that we take care of our business in our county, not support our drunken neighbors over in Multnomah County or in Portland. They can't seem to spend their money well. Well, they have to suffer the consequences for it, not us. So anyway, I think the facts speak clearly. I think the majority of the people are against this. I don't want to belabor this. And I think you said at the beginning, we need to respect diverse opinion. And I think in this case, the diverse opinion is 90% against. So as Dale said and others, we'll be watching you. We'll vote you out one by one if we have to. We'll repeal it. We'll do whatever we have to, but we're not going to stand for it. Thanks.
Herb, thank you.
Chair Peterson, Commissioner Bernard, Austin and Lehman, Leeann?
We can't hear you, so can you get closer to the microphone?
Is that, is that better?
That's way better. Thank you.
I thank you for letting me testify today. My name is Herb Chow, 8800 Southeast Sunnyside Road, Clackamas, Oregon. I'm a provider business consultant. We deal a lot with businesses trying to help them survive through the tough times. And they are facing very tough times. Since this is about the bridge, I wanted to tell you what we did back in New York, where I'm from. We were building the Verazano's Narrows Bridge. That is the heart of liberalism. And they told us, when we had a toll on the bridge, back then, when they were building it, it would only cost us 10 cents. I was there about three years ago. I avoid it when I can. And that's now $7.50. Now, I come from, I lived in Multnomah County, I've lived there for years. And I know that sometimes you mention Multnomah County and their tree covering and all the good things they're doing over there. I'm in Clackamas County now. You know why I'm in Clackamas County? Because folks in Clackamas County are decent, hardworking people. They don't ask for a handout. They just want to be left alone. I want to be left alone. I want government to do what they're supposed to do. And that's be governed by the people, not oppress the people. This bridge deal with Selwood Bridge, if you think you're going to get into a transaction with Multnomah County and it's going to go your way, you're seriously mistaken. PDC, for example, the Public Development Commission, had money that was earmarked to it. Sam Adams has been going after it religiously. We've got money being diverted from sewage, as you've heard earlier. So I'm saying, please, you're Clackamas County, not Multnomah County. Start acting like it. Represent our interests. Support our roads. Don't tax us. Let's learn to live within our means. All my clients have to. Shouldn't you? Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you all for coming in. We, if there's anyone who didn't have the time or didn't have the ability to sign in as they came in, and you want to come forward now, would be the time. I don't want to shut this down too quickly. Okay, I've got two hands up. So come on forward and give us your name and address. And you'll have three minutes. Before you get into your testimony, I just want to make it clear that we'll have a public hearing on December 9th. We will be taking any kind of written material between now and then for the record. There's been questions about next public hearing. That's when it's been scheduled for. And what we're hoping to do, if we have a big turnout again, is we're hoping that we can limit the folks who testify to those who haven't testified today, so that we can get everybody in that we possibly need to. And then we'll look to see what kind of time we have for those who may want to express another opinion. But I think we'd like to make sure that we have a priority for those on December 9th who weren't here at this hearing and didn't have the ability to be here today. So either one of you can start. Name and address for the record.
My name is Mary Lambert, 11280 South Riggs Dam Road in Canby, Oregon. As a citizen, if I want to purchase goods or services beyond what my budget allows, I have to earn more money. I can choose to work more, change jobs, invest differently or rearrange my priorities. As a government entity, you rely on me, us, for your wants and needs. While we may have differences on what our county wants as opposed to what we need, we can agree they both take money. When you want to add a new budget item, you must find a way to fund it. One way is to cut money elsewhere. Another is to make more money, meaning raise fees or taxes on the citizens and then working to sell it to us as a need. I believe you need to start trimming your budget and cutting your wants to focus on the county's needs. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming up. Next.
Thank you for letting me talk today. My name is Dale Steiniger. I live at 15213 Southeast Bevington Avenue in Clackamas. You know, I've heard a lot of questions about how much Clackamas people use that bridge. You know, it really doesn't matter if we used it exclusively. It's in Multnomah County. They want to rebuild their bridge. They've had money. It's not like they haven't known this bridge needed repair. As all of us know, when our roof needs repair, we save money for it. We've heard much testimony today how the city council and the mayor of the city of Portland have diverted funds to different projects. They need to fund their projects. I applaud you for trying to do some good for your citizens of Clackamas County, but do it where it needs to be done the most, in Clackamas County. We passed a while ago, a bond measure for the fire department and the public safety. Always a good scare tactic. I am in favor of good fire protection and safety. We need that. We passed a bond measure for the schools to rebuild them. Why do we let them deteriorate so much and so fast that we have to come back to all the retired people, elderly, that live in Clackamas County on a fixed income? Please, live within your means. I'm recently retired. Lucky me, but I have to live within what my retirement gives me. I used to work for a public utility. Maybe a lot of these people don't realize it, but when you guys approve the light rail or approve the bridge, you know that the utilities have to move their structures. Do you know what that happens? Do you know what that happens? That rate, that cost is passed on to me, now the ratepayer, and everybody else here. So, your decision on a lot of these things, such as the Carver Bridge, which is going to be replaced, a lot of utilities have to be moved and moved back. They pass that on to the ratepayers. Our rates go up. Even though they're regulated by the state of Oregon, they, like you guys, defer money from one pot to another. So, please, help the people in Clackamas County, live within Clackamas County, budget things for Clackamas County, and, as we have all said here, maybe then you will be reelected. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if that's it for the testimony. Eugene, no, you've already had your testimony, and if you want to submit, if anybody has anything more that they want to submit, they can do it between now and December 9th, and we would very much appreciate hearing from you. With that, I'm going to turn back to staff. Scott, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, Commissioner, it's my function to take us to motion, if you should so choose.
Oh, in terms of moving it forward to the next step? Okay, so, with that, clarifying questions to staff at this point, or should we ask for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
I'll ask for a motion.
Okay. Chair Peterson. Chair Peterson, I move or read the ordinance that will be named shortly, adding Chapter 4.04 Vehicle Registration Fee, Sellwood Bridge, to the Clackamas County Code by Title Only.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Austin and seconded by Commissioner Lehman. Is there any further discussion before we vote on the motion? Any questions? Commissioner Bernard?
So, one of my questions is first on procedure. So, let's say today we voted to, for the first reading. What happens when you take that vote, and what is the
Certainly, Commissioner.
...result of voting for this?
What happens is this sets the wheels in motion. Under ORS 203.045, we have to have two readings of the ordinance separated by at least 13 days. This would be the first milepost. We've had our first reading of the ordinance, 13 days later, we'd have the second reading of the ordinance, at which time US Commissioners would vote as to whether or not the ordinance should become law.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a couple to staff. Could we, when we actually approve, not approve, if it were to be moved to approve on December 9th, could we include language in? First of all, we need to update it, as Mr. Schoenhaid has pointed out, but do we need, could we add something that would say that this $22 million is the cap? Is there language already included in there to talk about that, in terms of if there were to be overruns, it wouldn't be able to come from this pot of money? Because I heard issues about cost overruns.
I'll refer that to Mr. Sedaris. I believe that is addressed specifically in the ordinance.
The threshold, as Director Gilmore points out as the ordinance, the enabling statute that was passed in 2009 only limits us to the specific purpose of design, construct, engineering the Sellwood Bridge. Now, that's followed through in our ordinance, which says we use this money exclusively for the Sellwood Bridge. At that point, we start leaving the strict limit of the law into practical governance, and the practical governance follows through with the IGA we would have with the city of Portland and Multnomah County, in which we say, "This is Multnomah County's money. We call for a strict accountancy in which it is used." And that takes us from the strict ordinance to the contract between the counties. In order for us to have that contract with Multnomah County, with the city of Portland, we have to come back to you with an IGA. That IGA would be part of a public process. The public would have all the opportunity it needs for input in that contract to make sure their money is spent wisely and according to the limits that they expect.
Okay, so, would we put language into the resolution that would require things in the IGA, or would we have to wait until the IGA is signed, or could we wait until the IGA is signed to actually have everything effective?
On the basis of the other experiences we've had in this county with intergovernmental agreements, the best place to do it is in the intergovernmental agreement, because you don't know what you're doing until you actually have the document in front of you. If we were to put it in the ordinance, we'd try to anticipate what problems we might have, which could create more problems for us later.
Okay, but we could make the, we could make the effective date, the signing of the IGA?
Yes, we have two very significant agreements that have to be negotiated. The first is the agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, for them to collect the money and give it to us. And then, there will be the agreement with Multnomah County and the city of Portland as to how our money is used, and there will be a lot of careful oversight with this, not only because we're using public monies, but because the only way we'll be able to use this public money effectively is through a bond, which brings in another level of review.
Right. Okay, good. And we could write into this, or write it into the, well, it would be into the actual resolution, perhaps a finite date, so that we're not guessing of January 2012 for the effective start date.
Well, I would respectfully counsel against a strict start date, because we don't know how soon we can start it. By that, I mean, we're anticipating that ODOT would take six to nine months to be able to implement this. Well, ODOT might be able to do it sooner, because they've already had a dry run with Multnomah County when they set up their fee. On the other hand, it might take the Department of Transportation more time, because Clackamas County is unique.
But we could do, no, sooner than?
Yes, we could do that.
And then, could we add language in about maximizing local jobs, as, to the extent of the law?
In this particular ordinance, it might not be as powerful as if we have it in the intergovernmental agreement. That's where we could best put in that specific language.
Okay. All right. Those were the questions that I felt were raised, and I needed questions to, by the public. Any other questions? Commissioner Bernard and then Commissioner Lehman?
Okay.
Then I said Bernard, I'm sorry.
Okay, good, I looked over.
Commissioner Austin?
Okay, about the jobs issue, I don't think it would probably hurt us if we put some language in the ordinance, even though it would have to be repeated again and strengthened in the IGA, but I think it's really, really important for us, because, I mean, a lot of our construction workers are out of jobs right now, and anything that would help, I think, would be a positive piece here for all of us. So, I think having that language somewhere in the ordinance would be helpful, I think. Wouldn't hurt at least.
I didn't have a question.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I guess I would also add materials where appropriate, because I don't want to spend all our money buying the iron from China either, so. And so, we're going to have opportunity to discuss this.
Further, yeah, especially after we hear more conversation and public hearing on the 9th.
Okay, so.
Commissioner Bernard?
So, the ordinance doesn't allow us, or anybody, to increase the vehicle registration fee on this specific issue, should this pass, correct? So, I mean, we can't say, "Well, we need another two bucks." Yeah, well, that's true too, but, I mean, we're setting it at $5. It won't be $9 two years from now. This ordinance restricts our ability to raise that fee.
In other words, if the Sellwood Bridge were to need more money, and Multnomah County would ask, we as the board would have to go back out for another vote, another discussion, it wouldn't just automatically be raised.
Chair, Chair Commissioners, the ordinance will be the law. The law will be set at $5 per vehicle, per year. Could another board come back and change the ordinance and raise it to perhaps $20? Yes, another board could do that, but they would have to come through the same public process that we're going through today.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard?
Another question. So, let's say, now, I remember back in 1980, there was a discussion about replacing the Sellwood Bridge. That didn't happen. So, let's say that, you know, we go to, we can't get permits, and they decide, "Well, we can't do this bridge, we'll just let it fall over someday." What happens to the money that, the fees that have been collected in Clackamas County? Would they continue to go to Multnomah County? Would we stop the fee? How would we deal with that?
Sure. We would take a very deep breath and then go back to the fundamentals by which we collected the money. And we collected the money to be used exclusively for the Sellwood Bridge. If you can't use it for the Sellwood Bridge, the money cannot be held and diverted to a purpose inconsistent with the statute. We would have to figure out a way to, most likely, some manner of refund, which, thinking aloud.
I'm going to have to ask everybody to be very quiet, thank you and respectful.
Oh, I can bear with it, thank you. Thinking aloud and with your latitude, if we ask the Department of Transportation to collect the money for us in the first place, we could probably ask the Department of Transportation to give the money back.
We've got their address.
We, that is true, we do have the addresses, they're all registered vehicles. All right. With that, any other questions, Commissioners? So, again, this vote moves it to the public hearing on the 9th. It is the first of several votes to get to a final vote. This is not the final vote, I just want to make that clear. So, if there's no further discussion by the commission, all those in favor? I'm sorry.
I didn't know we were having discussion.
Oh, yeah.
I thought we were asking questions.
Well, we're in discussion of, since the motion's on the floor.
Yeah, motion's on the floor. I did just want to say that, clarify that this is a vote, just to move it forward in the process. I think several good questions were raised today that I hadn't considered or thought too much about before, so I look forward to finding out the answers to those questions between now and the next hearing. So, this is a vote to move it forward, not necessarily a vote for this, this move at this point, because I think we do need to get some of those questions answered. But, so, I think that, I'll end there and then look forward to finding out some things.
Okay. Anything else?
I just wanted to add, great, great input from all sides, too. Really appreciate everybody's attention to this matter, really.
Yeah, no, very much appreciated. Commissioner Bernard?
I could actually go on and on and on all day, for many of the issues brought up, and I'd probably get in trouble for saying this, but I think bike registration would be a great idea.
Thank you for not clapping.
But one of the important things about this is jobs, jobs, jobs. And I think that if you, I think if you read the ordinance a little further, you'll find that, should this be raised, it would actually have to go to a vote of the people, actually the legislation. So, you might look at that, and that'd be a good, good piece of information to know when we do the, discuss the final vote. And some of the comments, I noticed one thing, that the back audience didn't raise hands at all when the issue of marijuana was brought up. It was, not a hand was raised. And then, one of the things that, you know, none of us were here when these buildings were built. All of us have volunteered numerous years. I can say that 16, 18, 20 years volunteered to our, our community. My office was no bigger than that area right there, and most of it was done out of the back door of my business.
Commissioner, you actually had an office?
I did, I did. It was a storage bin, but also, and I have actually seen fees decrease. For instance, Wilsonville had a utility fee for roads that, once they got caught up, they lowered the fee to every house. It's, and it's really the same story I hear every time. When Milwaukee was considering how to pay for its roads, which were millions and millions of dollars in a hole, we considered a gas tax and passed a gas tax, and everyone said, "Nobody will ever buy gas in Milwaukee again." Now, I challenge you to find higher gas prices in Milwaukee, or Sandy, Oregon, or Wilsonville, or a lot of places where those things happen, and, and that's not true. We had no change in gas sales. We had millions for our roads, as did many communities. So, I, my biggest issue with this is timing. This is a terrible economy. I'm fearful, I own a small business, and any tax increase for me is a challenge. But it's something that I have to address. I really think that, having worked the farmer's market booth for 10 years, many of you people, I've probably talked to you at the farmer's market in Milwaukee, serving as mayor, the comments about light rail, surveys, I heard 20,000 people were surveyed, I heard 25,000. So, I'd appreciate if that survey were made part of our record, so that we can look at it. So, and, but, in the end, it's about jobs, it's about the opportunities to sell and buy material, and, and that's why I'm going to support moving this forward for consideration on December 9th.
Can I just add?
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Lehman?
Now that you, now that you got going, I do want to also say that I take very seriously my responsibility as an elected official to maintain what previous taxpayers have done. I think that it's, when you become an elected official, and I was the mayor of Wilsonville, a volunteer job like these mayors for 12 years, and when you take on that role, you are, you, you have to consider the money and the investment that previous taxpayers have put in. Have put into
I'm going to have to ask
33% cut.
You, you are now, I'm going to ask Commissioner Lehman to, hold on.
You're pushing this now?
As you, as you, as you leave, I'm going to ask a deputy to go to the door and appreciate that we keep some decorum as people leave. Appreciate all the respect that you've shown so far. Thank you.
What I was saying is, it's a big responsibility when you take on the care of the assets that previous taxpayers have built, whether those are the freeways, or the roads, or public buildings, libraries, schools, all of those things. And it's easier to put off, as many people have, have pointed out, it's easier to put off and defer maintenance, because that's the easiest way to borrow money from the future, is to not do the required maintenance. And, and yet, each of us walks into an elected position, and we have to accept what it is the day we walk in. We didn't build this building, I didn't take care of the Sellwood Bridge since 1925, but now I, now I'm in a position where I have some responsibility for this piece of the public asset, and, and doing nothing is, as many people have said, is really not an option, because somehow, we need to all together find a way, a mechanism, to take care of this asset that some other generation built. And, and that's an important responsibility for any elected official and, and people in charge of the public assets. That was it.
Okay.
Chair Peterson, if I may, it's this time to make clear where we are in light of the discussion. I believe it's appropriate to turn to the clerk with a reminder that we're to read the motion. We're having a motion to read the ordinance by title only, followed by a vote.
After the vote.
Yeah, you need to make the vote.
Yes, I wasn't, we're not done yet.
Okay. I do beg your pardon.
Thank you, Scott. I wanted to make sure that everybody, for the record, there are a lot of folks that have provided us with comments, there have been a lot of folks who have called in, and we've had 33 folks calling in that have supported the $5 vehicle registration fee and 23 that have opposed it, and some with questions. And we'll continue to take anybody's comment, I just want to make sure that everybody has our email address, where they could email that to, Mary, that would be bcc@co.clackamas.or.us.
That's correct.
All right, and that gets to all the Commissioners, as well as, is recorded then into the record of this decision. So, I appreciate that. I'm going to just simply
I'm going to just simply say that I am looking forward to the next public hearing, supporting, looking at how to be a partner with Multnomah County, because they have been a partner with us in a lot of projects in the past, and have supported Clackamas County a lot in the, all of the projects that we have moved forward. And so, in, in terms of being a good partner, I want to continue this conversation on the 9th, and make sure that we have considered all of the possibilities that we need to consider if we were to move forward. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Mary, will you assign a number and read the ordinance by title only?
Sure.
This will be ordinance number 06-2010, and, an ordinance adding Chapter 4.04 Vehicle Registration Fee Sellwood Bridge to the Clackamas County Code. Thank you. We are, again, our second reading will be Thursday, December 9th, at 10:00 a.m., and we will have the record remain open, and this is actually pretty important, until December 8th at 6:00 p.m., so that we have it available for us the next morning. So if you're talking to anybody, December 8th at 6:00 p.m. is the cutoff. That's when it's close of business for the county. So if you can get it in by then, that would be great. And we just appreciate everybody coming. And with that, we will move on to our consent agenda, and I will ask for motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Lehan that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Do we have any commissioner communication today?
I've got about an hour. I'm good.
All right.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Lehan and then Commissioner Austin?
Yes, I would just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and, and remind people to be safe if they're traveling, and that's all.
Okay. Commissioner Austin?
Likewise, be safe on this Thanksgiving holiday weekend. Take care.
All right, with that, if there's no further business?
I'm good.
We are adjourned. Thank you.